Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We start with the pledge.
The pledge is to flag the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we will start with hearings from citizens. And I'm glad we have Andy Shank here today to speak to us. Please take the podium.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here as a bus rider on behalf of the Better Bus Coalition. Primarily, my comments are to address Government Square and already the removal of the 21 and the 78 bus stops at Government Square, as well as the incident that happened two weeks ago. But I would just say personally, from my end, as someone who uses Government Square frequently, if not daily or weekly, having that central spot is very important, both from the convenience part when there's bad weather, et cetera, having a central place where you can transfer under shelter is super important. And for people that are learning the system, et cetera, having a central local point, the way their system is structured to connect is extremely important as a regular bus rider. But I would like to also read a statement that the Better Bus Coalition put out two weeks ago regarding all the news that's been around Government Square. "The Better Bus Coalition expresses deep concern over the October 13, 2025, shooting at City Bird on Fountain Square, in which a teenager and an adult sustained non-life-threatening injuries. We extend our support to the victims and their families and call for collective action so that all who use downtown, including bus riders, pedestrians, workers, and residents can feel secure. We want to emphasize that this occurred on Fountain Square, not Government Square, where roughly 7,000 people board buses daily. In a public statement following the shooting, Mayor Aftab characterized the violence as beyond the pale and intolerable. He also referenced potential changes to how Government Square is organized and policed, suggesting every change is on the table and citing possible coordination with Sorda. While we appreciate the mayor's acknowledgment of the urgency of this moment, the Better Bus Coalition emphasizes that any changes to Government Square, which serves as the central hub for many transit riders, must not be decided behind closed doors. The elephant in the room is the desire to move Government Square. We strongly oppose moving Government Square, especially since a recent study by Benish affirmed the current location is more efficient and safe compared to relocating to alternate sites, citing negative impacts on travel times, cost, and ridership if Government Square removed. We are counting on our leaders to present reasonable solutions that don't hurt bus riders. Any long-term discussions regarding moving Government Square must include all stakeholders, especially the riders." Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think there has been a lot of discussion on Government Square in downtown. And we have several points during the agenda this evening where we're going to address it here from staff. We have a procurement item. So let's be cognizant of the Better Bus Coalition's comments as we move through all of those. I do want to note a few things before we get to that topic. I didn't notice Andy, our CEO, was speaking at the Metro State of the Region with the Chamber and was recognized as a leader and also as a top leader in the region, according to Cincy Magazine. So congratulations. I'm sure you enjoy me pointing that out. We also had an amazing event yesterday with the launch of Metro Now Zone 4. Very excited to see how this zone develops after launching the previous three. And those are moving forward. This one's in Blue Ash, Montgomery. And thanks to all the elected officials who were there to help us launch the event, it was a little chilly, unexpectedly chilly. So the comments were cut just a little short so everybody could get some hot chocolate and warm up. There's been a lot of BRT engagements over the past month and continues to be. We're in full swing in pushing forward with Bus Rapid Transit. And of course, the focus on Government Square that we'll be discussing soon. We have a motion that was discussed extensively in the Planning and Ops Committee. And we will consider it again here tonight. So I think that's a good time, actually, to focus a lot of our conversation around that motion, but also after we get an update from staff. So I'll end my updates there. And I think we have to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Properly moved and seconded. This is a voice vote. You'd think I would know at this point. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say left. Any abstentions? All right, minutes pass. All right. Chelsea, would you like to take on the Finance Committee?
Yes, please. Thank you so much, Blake. Hope everyone's doing well this evening. We had a very good meeting in our Finance Committee. Several things that we discussed and also some opportunities that exist, of course. What's important to keep in mind, at the top of your mind, is that long-term, we are steady and everything is good in that regard. So at this time, I will go ahead and pass it over to Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And if you would like, Mr. Etheridge, we can wait until farther down in the agenda to go through the summary?
Sure.
Is that what you prefer? Thank you.
Actually, we were discussing this just a few minutes ago. We might move the order and have Planning and Ops go first in the board meetings and then Finance, because then it flows naturally into your financial statements. So consider that next time. I did want to note that there was, if you haven't gone over the internal audits material from Finance, there was definitely some good work going on there as we continue to improve operations and our financial, well, it's broad operations here at Metro. Okay, so I'm going to go right into Planning and Ops. Unfortunately, Pete Metz cannot be here this evening, so I'm going to try and stand in for him as we go through Planning and Ops. So I want to note a few things, and then we'll go into the Government Square presentation. Sound good? Okay. One really significant success in the data is an increase in miles between mechanical service interruptions. So this is how long a bus can go and keep going before there's a problem. And it's one month, but it's looking good. It's a good trend. Bill Sproul, good work. Keep it up. Very excited to see that number. It also connects to missed trips and all kinds of service quality when the vehicles are continuing to operate. So that's great news. We do still have missed trips. We do have some on-time performance challenges and working on some ridership that's a little bit lower than expected, but generally operating pretty strongly. So that's great. There were extensive comments on Metro Rapid and the stops and the engagements in the Planning Ops Board Deck. If you have not gone through those, I highly recommend going through and studying those. We also got a CPS update. Slightly less usage than expected. Nothing major. And then I did note that 13 and 1/2% of the rides are at transit centers. So that's 13 and 1/2 of 177,000 so far this year. That's a lot of service being provided to our students, which is great. For some reason, I thought that there would have been more at the transit centers. Seeing that percentage was very interesting to me. All right, we have three action items that we'll get to in a minute. And then we actually have a consent agenda on top of that. So a little bit more coming out of Planning and Ops than normal. But Andy, did you want to go through a presentation on Government Square?
Yeah, I think Bill and I will do that, if you don't mind. So this presentation is a, we had a brief conversation in the Planning and Ops Committee about work that had been underway for the last few months. And this is really, this is not about the long-term implication and operation of Government Square that you'll talk about in the motion, but this is about what's happening today on the street and how we manage that space. We've been working with our partners over the last, like I said, three or four months to try to better coordinate the resources. There are a lot of resources that are at Government Square in downtown every afternoon, every day. We saw some gaps in how that space is managed and what could be done more productively for our customers. You recall that City Council passed a resolution or passed an ordinance that allowed Government Square to be considered a transit zone, like a streetcar stop or a BRT stop, which means that we could, we had more tools to use when it came to managing the space. This is the summary of that collaborative work that's going on with the city and CPD and 3-1-1 and others, just to bring you up to speed on that work that's happening out there on the street today. And again, separate from the larger conversation about what is next and what should be evaluated. So really, just an operations update. And I'll turn it over to Bill Sproul, COO, to talk through what we've been doing with our partners.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, it's really important that we attempted a collaborative approach with all of our partners, the city, Cincinnati Police Department, 3-1-1, 3CDC, and then the collaborative team. All of those, as Andy said, all of those resources are at Government Square on a daily basis. But we wanted to pull that together into a more coordinated approach because we want to make sure that we're engaging with those customers and those folks who are at Government Square and doing that on a consistent basis. So we've developed an engagement and a communications plan that all of those partners, along with our own supervisors, are all going to use that exact same approach. So it's going to include a script that we've put together collaboratively about how to approach some of those folks that are at Government Square and how to move those folks along so that all of us don't really want to spend our time enforcing compliance with the new ordering ordinance. What we'd like to do is find ways to move people along and help get them some resources. We have unhoused folks there. We have folks who are looking for services, mental health services, social services. So we've also got that information available to all of those partners. So as we start to roll this out, we'll be able to address that in a coordinated way so that if it's a 3-1-1 person or a collaborative person or one of our own supervisors, we're taking the same approach and we're consistent in how we are attempting to get enforcement with the ordinance. If you go to the next one. So we continue that coordination. And we've all made a commitment to having a permanent coordination effort to do that. We've designated Government Square leads for each of those agencies. And they're going to remain focused and working together and talking about what's working, what's not working. How do we adjust the enforcement? How do we adjust the engagement with the folks that are at Government Square in the different shelters so that we can keep that focus? We're coordinating the schedules to make sure that we're maximizing our resources, the communications protocols. And as of this afternoon, we started putting up signs at Government Square in the shelters. We took that on with the collaborative effort to make those signs. And our folks in the Maintenance Department, they hit a home run. So we were able to produce the signs very quickly. And they're actually going up this afternoon in the different shelters that talk about the renewed emphasis on behaviors that are prohibited in Government Square shelters and then also what the ordinance says and how we're going to be enforcing that going forward. This is what they look like. And as I said, you'll see those going up. And you can see on the left-hand side are welcome signs that talk about the different behaviors that we're going to be addressing with all of those partners and ultimately with the Cincinnati Police Department, who are also making renewed effort to help us with that. It provides a lot of resources. And we've even got a QR code on there, which goes to the city's 3-1-1 program, which will provide a list of resources to folks, everything for housing and food supplies, mental health services. And then you can see the other sign is from the city, which talks about the ordinance itself. This is our core messaging. And you can see we've got a sample of the script that we'll be using with all of those partners and really trying to focus our outreach on what the purpose of the Government Square shelters is. And that is for using transit. And that's what's first. And then finally is that escalation protocol that Cincinnati Police Department has worked with us so that we're all in combination and together on how we do that. Implementation starts this week. As I said, we're putting the signs up and all of our partners are ready to start monitoring the impact, monitoring our effectiveness, engaging with folks on a proactive basis. As Andy said, when we looked at this, we know we have plenty of folks down there, but we need to coordinate our efforts and make sure that we're all consistent to be the most effective that we can be. So we'll continue to manage that. We put a list of Cs in there because really this is about collaboration, being consistent, having a compassionate approach, but then ultimately achieving compliance with the ordinance. I think that's our last slide, if you've got any questions on the program.
Thank you, Bill. One of the things that we are going to be doing, like any problem-solving exercise, is that this team and the leads for each of the separate entities are going to be pulsing together weekly to see what's working and what's not working. And again, this is just our approach for what's happening on the street today. And I know that there's more to follow. Thank you. The ordinance, I believe, is active now, per the city. In our last conversation with the city, the ordinance is active now. And that's why the signs were hung this week. The signs started to be hung today. I don't know if they're complete, but they will be complete, if not today, tomorrow.
How are you measuring effectiveness or success?
So it's a great question. We don't have any baseline data in terms of what are the, you know, how often do we see people in shelters who are there not using the bus service? We don't have that baseline data. And with the speed at which the ordinance came through, we didn't have the opportunity to collect it. I think what we're going to have to do is some anecdotal survey work amongst our team to see what the fit and feel is. We have folks who have been at the square almost, if not every day, for the last two years. So we're going to rely upon them for their feedback as well. And then also talk to folks that are in and around downtown. But unfortunately, we didn't have the time to create that baseline.
The ordinance also mentioned fines. Do you know what those fines are?
The fines are listed in the ordinance. I believe the fine is $150. Again, when we look at the escalation protocol, the goal is never to have to engage CPD in enforcement. The goal is to ask folks, again, you can see in the script, you know, how can we help you? Do you need help getting on the bus? Do you know which route you're using? To make sure that those resources are available and safe and comfortable for the people that are there to use the bus. And then with all of the other resources and expertise that we have at the square, it's engage those folks to, you know, solve whatever issue that needs to be solved. And we have the right people there to do it. And then if there is, you know, just a situation that somebody refuses to move along and is occupying the space that should be used by bus passengers, then we can move and engage CPD for them to have that conversation. We would like to think if we take this kind of compassionate and customer service approach, that that happens very rarely. And I think that that's what we've seen, is that there are a lot of resources there, but it's not, there was no real clarity on who's on first and how things should be managed and what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. And I think there's a lot of energy behind making sure that this is a safe and comfortable place for our customers. I don't know if that was a long answer to your question, but ultimately, we would like to hope to think that there are very few fines and very few opportunities where CPD has to leverage that tool.
Excuse me. I just wanted to know what the fines were. First, I'd like to commend administration on the compassionate approach to this very touchy subject topic because people are involved, humans. So thank you. Now, my question is around, do we have any data around high traffic times of people in that space and doing something proactive?
Yeah. So one of the things that's a hallmark of this is coordinating those schedules. We now have in one place what the staffing plan is for those five different organizations that are helping to staff the square. Primarily, it's the afternoon rush is when we have the most staffing there. And that's when we see the most activity there. But we never really knew how many people from each agency was there because they were siloed approach to it. So now we have a master schedule, so we can see who's going to be there when. If we see issues that happen outside of that schedule, it's very easy for us to adjust or maybe even spread our shared resources in a different way. And it's also, we're working on a shared communication protocol. If something does happen, how does that communication trickle through those four different organizations? So we're all on the same page about what was done. And if there's needed help the next day? If that answers your question. Yep.
So are the team members keeping track of where they refer people so we know kind of what's happening with those interactions?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, this is such a fast-evolving thing. That's certainly something that we'll have the working group. They're meeting on a weekly basis. And we'll certainly ask them to think about how to coordinate that information and see how we're doing that.
Yeah. And the QR code takes folks to the 3-1-1 site, where they have the opportunity to request 3-1-1 assistance for a whole host of things. And so that's one piece of data that we'll have. But no, I don't think we have a, we don't have a data pipeline yet.
It would be great if we could at least arrange with CPD to track the number of violations. So that way, we know, we can at least see whether that number is high enough that we should pivot our efforts to try something else.
Yep.
Because that's what we want to avoid.
Great point. We attend a quarterly meeting with the city and CPD. And they provide us monthly tallies of what type of violation, whether it's an adult violation or a youth violation and all of that. So they're already collecting that data, but specifically, we should ask about this ordinance and have that tracked as well. Great point.
There could add to the conversation in regards to 3-1-1. If you initially go to 3-1-1, whether it's the app or the website, it's very city service-focused and not necessarily social service-focused. And if this is what we're using to connect folks to those resources, I mean, if I'm upset and in a hurry and being told to leave a bus stop or, you know, in these situations of crisis, I'm not going to scroll through garbage and waste pickup and things like that to figure out where those resources are. And so just something to talk about with them in terms of how they list and offer things.
Yep.
Yeah, 3-1-1 is building almost a separate page with this QR code, specific to those social services.
Perfect.
And for example, it should go straight to generosity.
513.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
And other questions on this subject? Yeah, I appreciate the conversation. And also, you can kind of tell when you see the, Natalie, if you go back to the slide with the signs there and the partners there at the bottom, those logos, you have a lot of different organizations very quickly getting together to try to improve this. And they're, each of these organizations have been extremely cooperative. And the partnership has been great. And the communication has been fast. And so we are figuring out some of this as we go. But just wanted to thank them publicly for their work, the city, the 3CDC, 3-1-1, and the others that are part of this work. So we will have more to report, as you can tell, as we move forward. So appreciate you all and your questions.
Andy, I just want to, if you don't mind, and I don't know if I'm out of line for this, but it did move really fast. And I want to give kudos to Andy. Andy went, met with the mayor. The mayor put it on the agenda immediately. It's probably one of the fastest things I've seen happen once it was brought to the attention of the mayor and the council. So kudos to Andy for going to city council and the mayor. And then kudos to the mayor and the city council for moving it through as fast as they did.
Yeah, thank you.
And then just to piggyback on that, yes, it was rapid. That was your Metro Rapid, right there. It was very, very quick. Exactly, it was very quick in terms of response. But also, for the past couple of years, I think the board and then just the different teams have put so much work and energy behind it. So the reason they were able to deploy so quickly and pull on, you know, bring partnerships to the table is because you had so many pieces already in place and an infrastructure. And so I really appreciate just the hard work that you all have done with that.
Great. Thank you very much for that presentation and the good discussion. There certainly has been discussion around this. Sorry, I've got a bit of a cold, so my voice is a little weak. But there's been discussion around this for several months. And it was impressive how quickly the action came together on it. So I think we can now move on to the motion that I introduced in Planning and Ops. And it was in a little different format. The team put it together into the sort of format here in our deck. And I assume you've all read it and worked through it. But I do want to say a few comments around it first. So there's no way to recreate all the discussions that have been going on Government Square, downtown, safety metro in the past several weeks. And I'm sure you've all been part of them. I certainly have been involved in those discussions. And I often think to, what is the model of our system? How are we operating when I think about these questions? And traditionally, we've been in a hub-and-spoke model. And that is very much a hub downtown and routes that go out from there. Passengers, riders would come in and then transfer at that one hub and move out. For many years, I'd say at least 10 years, we've been working to change that model at Metro. we've been working to change that model at Metro to a multi-nodeal system. So instead of the one downtown node, right? You would have nodes distributed across the region. And the reason you do this is because it's best for the riders. It allows for shorter travel times if a rider can transfer at the closest node or the most convenient node along their way to their destination. So there are difficulties in transforming from a hub-and-spoke, single-nodeal system to a multi-nodeal system. And one of the biggest challenges is getting those nodes, right? Identifying where they should be, doing the planning work to know where the route should go. Now, the great news is that we have the talent here at Metro. We have the technology to do the analysis, the planning, and all the other necessary steps. There are a lot of necessary steps to changing some of the service. But we do need some larger help from leaders in the region to achieve those nodes. And so a big part of this motion is directing staff to prioritize that transition to a multi-nodeal system and to work with the partners who can make that happen. We started on an Uptown Transit Center with FTA funding, I think about eight years ago. And we have not started realizing that just yet, although I have heard recent good news that there is progress. And we are going to continue to engage with that Uptown Transit Center. And Walnut Hills has been a topic, certainly for this group, over the past, well, year and a half, two years. So those are two nodes, but that's not all, right? We would need more. We need to identify them and figure out the best way to serve our riders and our community through that multi-nodeal system. So that's a big part of this motion. The second part is, I want to know what the best version of Government Square is. What's the world-class downtown transit center? What does it look like? How is it designed? How is it staffed and engaged, like the discussion we just had? So we've had engagement on whether the Riverfund Transit Center would be a good place to move the transit center. But, and we also considered several other options or possibilities around the Central Business District. But we didn't really answer that question of, well, what is the best version of this? So the second part of the motion is to engage riders, community, experts to know what that is and deliver that message back to us. And I'm considering this as world-class in all these different aspects. Maybe it's not all spelled out here, but in terms of safety, in terms of efficiency, in terms of design and beauty, and then even elements of placemaking, which we'll hear about a little bit more, to make that space work. So I'm hoping that there'll be support amongst the board to get staff, and honestly, I think it's partially a role of the board as well and any other leaders, to determine what that world-class transit center is. And then the language that's been going around is to exceed that. And I want to set that as a goal. So those are the core parts of my motion to further the multi-nodeal system. That serves our riders best, and I think is best for the region. I guess, let me, I'm summarizing, but I'm going to add one more point in, right? We hear a lot about east-west routes, crosstown routes as part of Issue 7. That's part of a multi-nodeal system. I just talk about it in a kind of nerdy way, right? So we've been doing that as part of Issue 7, but we want to mature that even further. Okay, so that's the first part. And then the second part is defining what a world-class transit center is and figuring out how we can exceed it. So happy to have some discussion on this. Any questions, concerns?
I just want to really just highlight, here I see the engagement of city and county. I just want to make sure we are engaging community council. It says "community leaders," but I just want to really be specific with community councils, the people who are living in those areas to have engagement in the process.
I'm going to add that in here.
I'll add as well, and this is more a comment that I think is really important. The conversation, and thank you, Blake, for this. The conversation isn't about moving Government Square. That's the wrong conversation. The conversation is how do we improve the transit system for our riders? And that's what's in your first piece, which I think is really important. The second piece, back to, and how do we create a world-class Government Square? Not this idea of moving Government Square, but how do we make Government Square a better place, right? So I like the approach. It's the right approach because it's focused on our customers first and foremost. That is what we're here to do. And ignoring, you know, there's all the noise out there, but the courage on your part and Boris' part, hopefully, to ignore that, right? The noise and focus on what we're here to do was to take care of our transit riders. And I think that's what this does here, to look at that. So thank you.
Thank you. I do want to note in committee, we talked a lot about all the entities that should be engaged and focus on everybody that we can engage, right? Being included in this discussion, right? And that is the goal, to serve our communities, our community councils, our riders, the entire region. And when I say "experts" in the motion, I consider them to be experts, right? Not just a PhD working at a fancy think tank. Like, our riders are experts. They're the ones who know how the buses work. You know, I do continuous improvement in business as a core part of what I do. And I always believed that the best ideas for improving how business operates comes from the frontline staff that are doing it every day. So our riders are riding the buses every day. Our drivers, our mechanics there, our supervisors, like, they're there every day. And we need to engage them as well in defining what is the best, safest, most efficient system for our region, for the city, and for the Central Business District. Well, I think I can move the motion, and we can get a second, and then we can have some more commentary if we need, but...
Just as in committee meeting, I would say that with folks being so interested in this particular topic, that we should read that prior to its approval.
All right, I'd be happy to do that. The resolution as number four. And I do, I did find one typo, so I'm going to read it without the extra "D" and "engage." All right. "The Southwest Ohio Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees hereby directs Metro staff to continue to prioritize the Uptown Transit Center and Walnut Hills Transit Center projects and to engage with partners, writers, and entities capable of advancing their completion. Identify additional nodes necessary to realize the multi-nodeal system and to collaborate with appropriate entities to facilitate their incorporation into the network. Engage with experts and writers to prepare a strategy to further improve operations and safety infrastructure of Government Square as well as all nodes in the system. And to continue partnering with the city, county, and other community leaders, writers, and metro stakeholders to ensure that public transit continues to be a safe and vital asset to our region." I think I read that just a little awkwardly because it begins with "therefore be it resolved," and then it's a list, but I think the content is clear.
I will second.
Oh, thank you. Properly moved and seconded. Questions? Commentary? Going once, twice? All right, I think this is a roll call.
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Do you want to add one other comment? We have been working as a board to engage with staff on the strategic level for the organization. We've had some smaller group meetings to be briefed on that, and we will be moving forward in the months to come. I think it is great that we've had that engagement. It helps us better to understand moments like this and the motions. And with the work that we are going to be doing in the months to come, this will continue to be a part of the discussion. All of these elements about serving our riders, having the best system possible really is a topic for every board meeting and every discussion that we have. So let's continue to make that, I would say, a part of our strategy and figure it out together on what needs to be done. Okay, we do have one more topic around this. But according to the agenda, we need to discuss rail right-of-way sale and the delegation of the authority to Andy Aiello. This was not in the committee, so this is being introduced here in the full board meeting, correct? And this is basically allowing our CEO to negotiate the sale of parcels, right?
Yeah, correct. So thank you, Mr. Chair. As we go through all the rules and regulations that govern purchasing within the organization, the opposite of purchasing is selling. And the resolutions and all the actions and the policies that we have in place don't provide any authority regarding selling because we very rarely do it. We sell old vehicles by auction, by public auction on the internet, but we rarely reach the $100,000 threshold of selling something. And as you know, we're selling all of our rail right-of-way. As we move toward closing on the first sets of those parcels that have been publicly bid and publicly put out to sale, we need, the board needs to provide authority of staff to actually sell said parcels. The action item lists the process therein, how we do it, how we get FTA's concurrence and review of the appraised value, so on and so forth. But our attorneys tell us that we need to have the board's authority to allow staff and the CEO to actually close and sell these parcels. So as you know, this is the, we're about to close on the first tranche of what will be dozens of different pieces of rail right-of-way. That'll happen over the next year and a half. And this would give authority to do so in accordance with the processes and the procedures listed in the action item.
And I would assume that you will bring back information on these sales and that work as it continues. This is just giving you the authority to take that action, right?
That's correct.
Anybody want to move approval of this? If not, I will. Okay, I'll move. Chelsea? Okay. Do I hear a second? Thank you very much. Properly moved and seconded. I think this is a roll call as well, since it's an individual item on the agenda.
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, so now we're coming back to Government Square. This was an item actually originally planned for discussion next month, but we moved it up since we were spending so much time talking about Government Square this month, and it seemed an important topic. Andy, if you don't mind, would you take us through this for just a couple of minutes and then?
Sure. Happy to. So again, this is work that began a few months ago when we were talking about how the square currently operates and some of the things that we, I won't recap what we had just covered in the last 20 minutes or so. But one of the things that we had discussed amongst our team was we have expertise in this region, being 3CDC. They have expertise in managing public spaces. They manage Fountain Square and Ziegler Park and Washington Park. And we have a current contract with 3CDC, and they do shelter cleaning and trash removal at Government Square. The discussion was, could we leverage their expertise and have them do more at Government Square like they do in these other places to provide a more welcoming environment? We then had a discussion with them about that. They provided a very thoughtful proposal back to us. We reviewed that proposal in committee. And it would include additional staffing of their outreach team. It would include additional landscaping and beautification of the space. And some of the other pieces that we have are activating some of the spaces that are currently maybe not being used in their highest and best use. And they have expertise in that area, too. So we moved this ahead because we thought it would be good timing to package this all together. We have a proposal from them. We can work out the final details of the actual operation within the authority provided by the board. So that's a big-picture update. Happy to provide, or answer any questions if there are any.
I don't have a question, but when we were in committee, and this was presented to us with some really great pictures and images as well, it was quite honestly one of the first times that I had sat back and thought about activating the space in a more physical way, by way of planters and things like that, and how that kind of helps to direct traffic as well as creating certain spaces that, where you want the intended outcome of behavior, if you will, to happen. But it was really, really beautiful, very well thought out, very well designed, and I really appreciated that coming before us, so.
I have a question, just because I'm new. Why is this a sole source award and exempt from the competitive process?
It's a great question. So 3CDC has a, we have an MOU with the City of Cincinnati to be the sole provider of those services in the Fountain Square and Core District. So this original contract that we had when we sought to do shelter cleaning and trash removal, it also includes cleaning the bus stops in and around the basin. The city directed us toward 3CDC as the sole provider of those services per the city in the basin.
And is it right that since Government Square is basically part of the right-of-way?
It's city right-of-way, correct.
It is the city's property.
Correct. So Government Square is not a parcel of land. It is essentially a wide spot in the road. So it is right-of-way, just like the middle of Fifth Street is right-of-way. Therefore, it is in the public space, and we have to use the city's contractors when we operate in that public space. The infrastructure that sits on top of Government Square is owned by Sorta, and we have an MOU with them that allows us to place and maintain that equipment and infrastructure in the right-of-way. But it is unusual in that it is not a parcel of land owned by an entity.
And so we don't have a choice.
Basically.
Thank you for just sitting down.
You did that very well, Andy.
And quite frankly, we wouldn't have gone down this path and really matured this idea if we didn't get really good service. So the service that we do get is very good. And the reporting that we get from 3CDC is very thorough. There are a few dozen locations... There are a few dozen locations downtown that they clean for us and look at a daily basis, and they do excellent work. So, I think that's why we thought about leveraging them as a partner, because they do do good work.
I was, oh, sorry. I had just a technical question. Says, "While in Government Square today observing, do they clean also up against the federal building and the sidewalk there, or is it just the lane and where our passengers board?"
I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
Okay. One of those things, there's one of those trees that drops all the fruit, and it's a mess. And I don't think that's significant for the issues we're discussing here, but I was like, somebody needs to clean this up. All right.
Always let us know.
Yeah.
I'll just say that I'm very happy to support this effort. 3CDC is so good at activating space and managing public space. As Blake knows, I was a little giddy when I saw the busker and planter maintenance in here. I think there are so many possibilities for what can be done to improve Government Square physically, and also improve the experience for everyone who is in that area waiting for a bus or getting off a bus. And I think it's, I'm really curious to see what they can do to this space with art and music and people, just to really make this space come alive. So, I'm excited about this, and just so curious to see how this plays out over the next couple of years. Thank you.
All right. Have we moved and seconded this? No. Sarah?
I will move to approve the motion.
All right. Thank you. Properly moved and seconded. Last second for questions, comments? Hearing none?
Ms. Hamot?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Upstain.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Rethridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a procurement consent agenda with, I believe, four items on it. As you know, at any time, we could take one of those items off to consider individually if anybody on the board would like to do so. So, we have an advertising agency contract. We have electric vehicle charging stations, bus stop pole and signs, and then paratransit vehicles. Do you want to note on the bus stop pole and signs, this is the culmination of many, many, many years of work? And we have an event coming up soon to put the first one in, which is very close to the DAP Center. And the students at DAP and faculty helped us to design these signs. I particularly feel a connection to this project, because I think that these stops, benches, shelters, signs are one of the primary faces of the transit system. And having beautiful signs that also very clearly communicate what the transit system is doing is essential. And it's great. We have, I think we have federal funding for a lot of this, and we got external support to make this happen. And I'll tell you, you know, there was a bus stop redesign project that took a lot of energy on the staff's part to make sure we had all the right stops, and that took at least a year, if not two, or more. And then we moved into this design phase, and now we're actually ready to start putting them into action. So, that's huge. Feels wrong to have it on the consent agenda, so it gets a little extra commentary there. If anybody would like to take any action pulling them off? Hearing none, I move the approval of the consent agenda. Properly moved and seconded.
Ms. Hamot? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Rethridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson? Ms. Moss? Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
And that gets us through planning and ops. I'm gonna have to have a conversation about, with Mr. Metz, having missed this, because that was a lot. He does a lot of work on that committee. I look forward to having him back. He's up in Columbus doing some important work up there. All right. So, we have financial results, then progress and priorities, an opportunity for new business, and then we do have an executive session this evening. So, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Ms. Rethridge. As Ms. Clark said, we had a robust discussion last week, so I'll kind of go through this pretty quick. You can see, our total revenue came in at $14.1 million, which was slightly unfavorable by about 1.6% to our budget. Expenses came in at 14.3. Again, slightly unfavorable to budget by about 1.4%. You net those two numbers together, and it was $189,000 negative capital contribution for the month, which was also unfavorable to budget by about $426,000. And you can see our ridership for the month was slightly under budget, but a little positive from, to last year. If you go to the next page, Natalie. What I really like to do here is focus on the right side for the year-to-date, because we do have a lot of moving pieces going up and down each month that, from the timing perspective, kind of skew certain data. But looking at the revenue, want to make sure everyone realizes that right now, we have six months of actual county sales tax data. And if you look at the county sales tax line, we're right at $117,000 favorable, or 0.1% to our budget, which is great for us, considering the county sales tax represents, I'll call, about 70% of our total revenue for the organization. You look down at the total revenue line of $126.6 million, slightly unfavorable to our budget by 0.6%, but when you compare it to last year, you can see that we're about 6.4% greater than last year at this time with our total revenue. Going down to the expenses, the expenses are favorable in that we spent, we've spent less than we expected for the first, call it nine months, by about 0.7%. Looking at that year-to-date as well, that's up 6.1%. Revenue growing at 6.4%, expenses at 6.1% is good news in my book, because the revenue is a larger top-line item. Also want to really thank Kevin Ruth and his team and the entire metro organization here tonight, because when you have a budget for the first nine months, and both the total revenue and the total expense line are both under 1% of a variance to budget, that's very impressive. So, I want to thank everyone within the organization of helping Kevin with the budget, and then getting our actuals right near our budget. So, some good news on that one. And you can see the bottom line, we are at $2.5 million of an operating capital contribution thus far this year, which is also favorable to our budget. Natalie, go to the sales tax line slide. And this is our sales tax, which, you know, we keep an eye on this every day with it being such a high percentage of our revenue. I do want to point out that for the first six months of actuals that we have, you know, we saw the budget comparison on the previous slide, but year-to-date, we're about 5.6% ahead of where we were last year at this time. So, good news all around. That's all I have. Want to open up for any questions anyone has here at the table. All right. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Clark, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, just a quick comment, that also in committee, one of the things that we were looking at, we were seeing some of those numbers, and while maybe in the very present, they may not have been favorable, one of the things that we learned is that there are efficiencies being sought throughout every single department in our organization, which was really nice. And so, we are seeing some good things come of that.
One other thing I will add, and want to thank Bill and his team as well. On the parts and supplies, that's been a negative variance for us, or we've spent more than we expected. But Bill's team has just done a tremendous job of highlighting opportunities for us, and the opportunities for individual parts or for modules have been turned over to the procurement team. So, great news all around there. We're looking to get some fixed-price contracts, which would eliminate some of the volatility we've had, and have some price certainty going forward. But again, thanks to Bill and his team. Thank you.
And I'd like to note, and perhaps save some of you from having to ask this question, but when I looked at the current year and budget numbers past, or beyond the last three months, I thought, oh, staff forgot to update those numbers. The budget and the actuals couldn't really be that close. And then it turns out that they are. You just did a really good job of forecasting those last year, so, good job. Sorry that I had to ask that question.
Great job creating the budget, which Kevin does with a tremendous effort and skill, but also great kudos to the entire organization for managing to the budget. So, it's an all-around effort within metro.
All right. Thank you very much. Progress and priorities?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Few exciting things to talk about. We mentioned some of these in the Planning and Ops Committee. We are continuing to improve transportation and civic participation. Metro's fixer-out and access, paratransit services will be free to the public on Election Day, November 4th, as we have done in many years past. Also excited to honor and welcome our veterans onboard on November 11th. Those with military ID can ride for free. Want to thank them for everything that they do for our community. You covered the bus stop celebration, so I'm gonna sub that one out for the Metro Now Zone 4 launch that we had yesterday. Already seeing ridership on the system. It started yesterday on Monday. Places, again, it's, we call it the Blue Ash Zone, but it's Blue Ash in Kennedy Heights and Silverton and Deer Park and Montgomery. Really excited to provide a new transportation mode to that part of the region. It was a great kickoff event, and we were really excited to see how folks will use that to get to jobs and get to healthcare and all those things. We continue to meet with our elected officials. You know, we like to kind of have an evergreen contact with our folks in Columbus and our folks here locally. You can see some of the folks that we met with, Representatives Brownlee, Odeoso, and Baker, also Clerk of Courts Pareek. Great conversations about what they're trying to accomplish civically and how we fit into all of that. And lastly, this is one of the updates, kind of, you know, what's happened since. You all approved a Red Bike partnership just about a year ago in preparation for the 2025 operating year for Red Bike. One of the things that was required in that partnership is that we implement a first-mile, last-mile pilot. So, if you recall, in 2024, pretty much every Red Bike station was on a bus route. So, we couldn't answer the question, would people take the Red Bike to the bus? Because you couldn't, you didn't really need to take the Red Bike to the bus, because the Red Bikes were overlapped with the bus routes. Working with Red Bike's team and our planning team, they identified areas of high residential density that were near transit, but still that half-mile to mile and a half away, and are placing pairs of Red Bike stations in what we would call maybe a transit desert, and connecting it to a transit hub or a transit route. Those stations, the first tranche of those is going into place in Northside. We will begin collecting data on those immediately and report back to see kind of what the pilot has to show. There are two other locations that are going to be rolling out in the subsequent months, and we'll be providing a more thorough report as we begin to collect data. So, just want to let you know what's been going on in the Red Bike world.
Andy, I have a quick question on that.
Yep.
I think that's great, and looking at the density, are they taking the stations from those that are not utilized very well or at a good frequency in putting them there? Or are they putting brand-new ones there?
Combination of both. They had stations in storage that they were able to put in areas, and then there are some realignment of the existing stations within the Northside neighborhood. So, a little bit of both.
Do we know the utilization number for Red Bikes? How frequently are?
Yeah. So, that's the data that we'll collect on this station pair that didn't exist before. How many folks are, we can, we know if a bike is checked out and where it winds up and checked in. So, really, there's some higher-density multifamily housing in Northside that we think folks would potentially use the bike share to get to transit. So, we're gonna test that, and we'll have that data to share.
Were you thinking overall? Because when you asked that, I was like, I would like to know that as well. Yeah.
Not the use for buses, but just because we supported that. I remember just, I didn't vote, because it was my first meeting. But I'm just curious.
Like, how's Red Bike doing? We can bring that information back to you in Planning and Ops next month, and we have all of that information, and we'll bring it back to you to show how 2025 is going.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I would think Red Bike would probably have a year-end review on their operations coming up sometime soon that maybe we could share with the whole board.
Yeah. One of the other things that was in the motion from this board was that essentially we have a seat at the table, and so now I'm the technical representation of Metro on their board. So, they have quarterly board meetings, and I get all their financial data and their ridership data, and we'll share the latest batch that we have with you next month. Yep. Great question.
All right.
That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Andy, appreciate it. Opportunity for new business. The temptation to make the Pete joke is too strong. Pete's not here, so no new business. Just joking. All right. We're gonna move into executive session. I think I have to read this passage in order to do so, under section 121. At least this is the one I have. Section 121.22G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject, are the subject of pending or imminent court action. I move that we go into executive session.